All righty. Good morning, everybody. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the Minnehaha County Commission meeting. Today is February 16th. I'm going to call our meeting to order. We have meeting documents right next to Commissioner Hyburger on that end of the counter. And again, silence your phones, and if you need a listening device, just reach out to one of the county staff, and we can help you out. Begin with our routine business, and look for a motion to approve our agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We also have our commission meeting minutes for February 2nd, as we did not have a meeting last week.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of $4,884,311.31, a larger amount. Anybody have comments?
Pay the bills. I do have a comment.
Second, this is for two weeks, so...
So you got a s- your second?
I seconded it.
Okay.
I would just comment that we, as we often do, have a large payment going to the state of motor vehicle stuff. That's actually not a budgeted expense. It's just a pass-through from the funds collected by our county treasurer, which are rebated to the state. So don't think that we're spending $4 million a week if you're a citizen out there. It's just part of what we do, and it is for two weeks, as Commissioner Hyburger just pointed out again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have reports. We have the sheriff's report, Minnehaha County Emergency Management Calls Report for the fourth quarter, the auditor's account with the treasurer, and the register of deeds statement of revenue for January. Those are all available over here. Move on to personnel actions. I see Ms. Dever walking in the room. I think we'll start with a motion to approve our routine personnel.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a few items for you this morning. After the routine actions, which you just approved, I'm requesting approvals to both our handbook provisions and our drug and alcohol policies and procedures manual. This really stems from regular updates that the DOT makes regarding drug and alcohol testing rates. Currently, in our handbook, we have a general policy, and then our procedures manual guides the specifics. We'd like an update to the handbook, basically saying we're going to follow the DOT guidelines. And then for our drug and alcohol procedures, we're going to go ahead and update them to reflect the current testing rates. So you'll see us before you probably once every year, or once every two years, but now the handbook will be pointing to the policy and procedure manual.
Okay. Do we... Okay, we need a motion to approve the Alcohol Procedures Manual Employee Handbook. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All righty.
The next item is really just a briefing. For the last year approximately, we've been reviewing our current supplemental retirement plan. Just to give you a sense of what that is, currently, all of our employees participate in SDRS for our regular retirement plan. That's required for all staff who are full-time benefits eligible. In addition, we offer supplemental retirement program for our employees that they can choose to save additional funds towards retirement. And we offer that currently through ICMA. To give you a sense of size, we have about $8.8 million in assets from all of our employees who contribute to that, and we have about 115 employees who are actively participating, so about 20 percent. We've looked at that plan, and of course, there's an expense ratio for all of our employees who are investing funds through that. And SDRS also offers a supplemental retirement program, and they came to us just to review their plan about a year ago. And we've met with them. I want to give thanks to Carol Muller, Kim Adamson, former employee Vicki Hewitt, Ben Kite, Maggie Gary, who've sat down and reviewed a lot of reports over the past year or so. At heart, we think SDRS offers some very good plan provisions for our employees, and we're seriously considering recommending a move to SDRS's supplemental retirement program. What it comes down to is SDRS has about $55 million in assets with 16,000 people contributing, and so their rates are very interesting to look at, and probably a benefit for our employees. So I'm providing you with this briefing today, just to let you know we're looking at it. If we want to make a change, it will probably be a 14 to 16-week transition process. Employees would be required to move over to the supplemental retirement plan likely. It'll be different, you know, not the same investment lineup, but certainly some very good options for people to consider. We would not be working as directly with employees because SDRS contracts with Nationwide for their plans, so our employees would work directly with SDRS, as opposed to us, who works directly with ICMA. Different plan provisions. They don't offer a Roth IRA. The lineup is a little bit smaller, but the expense ratios do look better to us, in our opinion. So we're still looking at it. We haven't made any final decisions. I would ask that if there are any employees or managers who are listening and want to learn more, to please contact me sometime over the next couple of weeks. I'd be happy to talk to them a little bit more about this. But as we continue to look at this, if we make a recommendation, I'll likely be coming back to you sometime in about two to three weeks to ask for your opinion on that, and then give you more information on really what a transition would look like.
Okay. Questions for Carrie on that? Commissioner Bender?
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say that Carrie has been really good about keeping me updated on the work that they've been doing on this, that has been going on for quite a long time now. And, you know, I've worked on these kinds of things before. They're complicated, and they involve a lot of people. And when you involve a lot of people, what's best for the majority is not always going to be, you know, best for one individual, or, you know, from an individual standpoint. So they're hard decisions to make, but I really appreciate the fact that she's pulled together such a large team to look at this, that they've been very patient about taking a lot of time to look at that, and I'm confident that we'll end up making a decision that's good for the overall group. I think, from a national standpoint, people are very envious of SDRS and what they've been able to do. They have a really impressive track record. And so just as plan sponsors and for the good of our employees, we needed to take a hard look at it, and I just want to thank Carrie and her team for doing that hard work.
Thank you for that. And again, a lot of gratitude towards that whole group, because they were very patient in looking through a lot of detailed information and giving a lot of consideration to this.
Other questions? I guess I do, or maybe comment, I too. I know the amount of work that goes into that, and the fiduciary responsibility that, you know, is kind of looking at plans that are available to our employees that we have. Do we have a lot of people that are using the Roth provision in the ICMA?
We have about 40 of our staff who are doing the traditional Roth, and about 17 others that are doing the 457 Roth. So I'm glad you brought that up. To be clear, SDRS does offer a Roth savings plan. It's just not the traditional. So there will be options for staff. I just want to be very upfront that it isn't, you know, completely apples to apples. There's differences. But at the heart of it, when we're looking at some of these expense ratios, we're talking about the difference of a tenth of a percent, or a half of a percent. And while that doesn't sound like such much on the surface, maybe, people who are investing know that over a period of time, that really adds up to a lot of dollars, and we want to do what's best for our employees as a whole.
Yep. So the money that's in the Roth would be able to transfer. We wouldn't... It wouldn't be staying with ICMA. All the funds would be moved?
To be honest with you, there's a couple of options that we're looking at for that transition. Very likely, what this would mean would involve everybody who's currently in that plan or on that group plan converting over to SDRS if we were to go to that. And again, it's SDRS's supplemental retirement plan. Not everything is going to convert perfectly. The 457 Roth would convert, but if it's a traditional Roth, those individuals would probably have to look at other options for maybe transferring their funds to a different investor.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I always encourage people to save money for retirement, so thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
That was just a briefing, so no action at this time, but I'm sure we will in the future, or possibly in the future, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have multiple abatements. I got to make sure I didn't get past public comment here. We have a long agenda today, so many abatements to recommend for approval. Do I need to read these into the record, or how do you handle them? Okay, yeah, okay. So we have the City of Sioux Falls parcel number 51450, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $8,318.03. Do we do each one individually, or can we take all the city ones as a group? Eric?
Individual.
I'm each individually. Go ahead, Chris. Welcome.
Chris Lilly Equalization. Yeah, unfortunately, today, a lot of these abatements, we have to sit on in our office until the tax bills come due, and once they come due, then we start going through the process, since we're dealing with the taxes. So yeah, the items A through H, and we'll cover them individually, have no concerns. These are all exempt entities that have acquired property at some point throughout the year. So the minute they acquire that property, depending on the date, from that date forward, then the abatement is applicable, and we approve this abatement request for the City of Sioux Falls.
So this is going to be, we're going to do A through H. I'm going to read them off. We'll do a roll call vote, and then we'll go, we'll just do them each that ways. Okay, so the first one, are we looking for a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Number, or letter B, City of Sioux Falls parcel 51451, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $2,154.46.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Approved. City of Sioux Falls parcel number 51887, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $1,110.10. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Approved. City of Sioux Falls parcel number 51888, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $1,311.98. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Approved. City of Sioux Falls parcel 53621, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $2,670.79.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Approved. City of Sioux Falls parcel 62216, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $2,556.82. Motion?
Motion to approve, and I think we missed one.
Second.
Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Approved. Last one's a little different, and it's 2018. Any comment on that one, Chris?
I think you missed number, I think you missed F. You missed F.
I missed F. Okay, we'll go back to F. City of Sioux Falls parcel 55713, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $5,730.77.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Approved. Thank you for keeping me on task. I knew I shouldn't put a checkmark by them as I was going down. Okay, 2018.
Yeah, parcel 11794, 2018 taxes. It's basically the same thing. It was just due to some plating and reconfiguring of that, that it got missed in the changeover with the ownership names. So as the things got straightened out, it was discovered that the City of Sioux Falls did own this, and we made the change. And so on this one here, we just have to go back another year, but it's all, we recommend approval on this one.
Okay. So that is City of Sioux Falls parcel 11794, 2018 property taxes in the amount of $220.18. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, looks like the next ones are school districts.
Yep, item A and J are also the similar thing, where the school district, an exempt entity, has acquired properties at some point throughout the year, and we're recommending approval on both of these.
Okay, so Sioux Falls School District parcel 29800, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $887.15. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Carries. Sioux Falls School District parcel 29801, property taxes in the amount of $136.09.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Carries. Now we have the Crooks Housing and Redevelopment Commission parcel number 58589, 2020 property taxes, $449.70. Chris?
Yep, basically the same thing. The Crooks Housing and Redevelopment Commission is an exempt entity. They qualify for it, so again, as of the date of acquisition on their property, they become tax exempt at that point, so we recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Approved. City of Hartford parcel 16016, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $310.24.
Same thing, exempt entity.
Move for approval?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. I was grinning as I was reading ahead.
I can't help you.
Okay. I'm going to do my best, and I apologize, but I have "Iglesia del Dio Vivo Columna, Why Apoyo de la Verdand La Luz del Mundo." Parcel 68022, and I hear chuckling, 2019 property taxes in the amount of $337.32. What is this?
Move approval.
This one here, again, they're an exempt entity, and they acquired a mobile home that was being utilized as a parsonage, and so we've got them fixed moving forward for 2020, pay 21, but it was discovered that they had purchased this mobile home prior to that, so we recommend approval.
So it's a parsonage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Carries. Jason Noyes parcel 78974, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $1,141.34.
This one here is obviously a little different. We've had several of these now. This is an office error on our part with an owner occupied application. As I'd mentioned in a previous meeting, I just learned here not too long ago that when we apply owner occupied, there's two separate screens within the old AS400 system that are required to be there. Otherwise, if it gets entered in one and missed in the second screen, when we do our rollover and stuff, it wipes it out. So this one here, we have documentation. This is an office data entry error, and they made application timely. It was valid. Due to the office error, it was just wiped out, so we're recommending approval of this abatement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will Proval fix this, so that we don't have that?
In code, will.
Okay, I knew it was one of them.
Yep.
Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. DND Enterprise Revocable Trust parcel 40660, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $4,013.4.
This one here is, again, a little bit unique. We did an abatement already on this one for the 19, pay 20. This is for the 20, pay 21. What happened in this instance is there's two properties sitting side by side. The property owner requested that we combine them, and we did, but we missed going and voiding the old parcel, so they got, we put it together on one, they got taxed there for both pieces. We forgot to void this one out, or missed voiding it, so they got taxed on it. We abated that one, but because of the timeline, the assessment notices and everything were already processed, and that crosses us into another year. So we couldn't do anything with this one until the tax bills became applicable, so this concludes this one here, and it's fixed moving forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Roll, call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Carries. David Dershen parcel 72137, 2020 property taxes, $435.46.
So again, this one here, this mobile home was moved out of the county, and because of that, we can't do anything mid-year. We have to wait till the tax bills come forward for, so we can give those taxes back. So if the property is not there for removal, loss, fire, flood, storm, catastrophic damage, things like that, when it's not there after the assessment notice timeframe is put out there, then we have to go through the abatement process, so we recommend approval.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Call the roll.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Carries. Paul Fick Holmes Incorporated parcel 90481, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $4,677.50. This one seems different, but maybe not.
Yep, yep, kind of the same deal as the other one. This one here, I recall, there was a building permit taken out on a parcel. One appraiser had gone out there and looked at that. In the interim, then, it was replatted onto another one, and the building permit wasn't finalized out, and so the physical property description changed due to the plating, and so the other appraiser went out and applied it on the other one as well, so it was basically assessed twice. So we are correcting that, and it is fixed moving forward, so we recommend approval as our office error.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Carries. Nicholas Ortmeier parcel 23161, 2020 property taxes, $652.82.
This one here is another owner occupied. Similar situation as the first one, an office error. He made application. We have the documentation to show that, and it just didn't get applied into the software, so we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Karski?
Walter Killian parcel 21866, 2019 property taxes in the amount of $1,257.6.
This one here is a flooded property up in the Dell Rapids area, similar to the other ones that we've done in the past. Obviously, we can't process these until there's a request. I don't know why the request was coming so late on this one here, but we have the documentation. Our appraisers did review it. We have FEMA documentation that this property was damaged. We did reduce the value moving forward from that point. Now the taxpayer has actually requested an abatement, so we are recommending approval of this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Aye.
Hi.
Elderly Freeze, parcel two one eight eight six, twenty twenty, property taxes, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-four cents, pretty self-explanatory.
Yep, this one here, I really don't know anything about it. This one was was processed through the treasurer's office as the taxpayer was unaware or didn't know or didn't get the paperwork as they stated due to flooding in their area. Their mail was not delivered, so they missed the application deadline. So Chris is recommending approval of this, and I would also recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Call the roll.
Hi, Berger. Hi. Bar. Hi. Bender. Hi. Benega. Hi. Karski.
Hi. Passes. All right, two of those. Thank you very much, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, just a question for Chris. You know, we had a significant number, or we had a number of ones that were errors on our side of the office. Were they ones that we discovered, then the errors, or did the homeowner discover them, and is there a possibility there's more out there?
Kind of a mix of both. Some of them get their tax bills and go, whoa, this is way more than what I what I was expecting and and call. And then we do the research and discovered that the owner occupied wasn't applied. Is there more? There could be. There's no real way to double-check that. We have scoured and looked for what we could. I know there's been one or two that our office did discover, and we actually reached out to the taxpayer as they were going through those. There's a report that we run at the end of the year. And again, when I mention those two screens, if it's not entered in both at the end of the year, it flags up and gives us a report, and we mail out. I think we mailed out several thousand where everything indicates that they could be eligible, but we don't have them coded. And I know they discovered, our office staff discovered, a couple of those that way that it flagged up, and and as they're looking, found the documents that were there. Other ones are are the inverse, where the taxpayers received the tax bill and had questions about it and contacted us. And, you know, when we make a mistake, we want to fix it and and fix it right and move forward. What I can tell you is when we move on to encode, a lot of that clarity is gone. There's one screen, it's one location, there's a memo documentation that goes on to it. It should eliminate nearly all of these. Then it would come down to basically human error.
Additional comment?
Commissioner?
Just just to our listening audience, to make sure that you're checking your tax bills from the past years and going forward in case there is an error, just because we're changing over our systems right now, and it could happen. And so you are on the hook here to make sure that you're paying attention to what you are paying for taxes.
Absolutely, and a great point. As we're moving forward with our with our changes, the assessment notice this year, as opposed to the postcards in the past, coming out on eight and a half by eleven, will be much more clear. And and I'll touch on that here in my briefing coming up. But as you get your assessment notices this year, if you are owner occupied, there is a line for owner occupied. If your value is in that line, it says you're owner occupied, as opposed to the postcard that just had an S. Nobody knew what that meant. Now it is going to say your value is in the owner occupied line. If you own your property, lived in your property, owned it by November first of of twenty nineteen, occupied it, it was your principal residence, and you get an assessment notice, and it is not, your value is not in the owner occupied line, but is in the residential line, you have until March fifteenth to make application, and we can get you corrected and push forward at the county board.
Commissioner Barf?
Chris, we had quite a few properties that the had been acquired by the city. And as they continue to accumulate property, it means that the taxes are higher for everybody else. They own quite a few properties out in the county even, including large acreages. At some point, I might want to talk to you about how much of that land they own, because we can't have everybody be exempt.
Right, right. We do have Minnehaw County in the in the size and the parcel count and the number of exempt institutions. It is considerable, the amount of of property exemption that is out there for multi-reasons.
Commissioner Bender?
I apologize, because I anticipate we're getting ahead of ourselves, but since we've been talking about the assessment notices, I just wanted to believe that the assessment notice this year is not a postcard, but it's in an envelope, and the outside of the envelope is going to be marked in red, assessment notice, so folks need to be looking out for that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. No system is perfect, and if we make a mistake, we're going to fix it, so we will own it. So, thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have no notice and requests, we have no planning and zoning notices, not this week, anyway. And petition for compromise lien, none. So now we are at public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Nobody running down the hall? Okay. We shall move on then to regular business, which we will, we have several briefings today. And I'm going to, you know, in the interest of time, ask that we get kind of broad overviews and try to limit our briefings to that ten-minute range. If you have, if commissioners have questions, or they will reach out to the people doing the briefing and/or vice versa. If you would like to visit with the commissioners about specifics within your briefing, I encourage our presenters to do the same thing. So we shall begin with briefing on Forward Sioux Falls, a long and prosperous venture for our community. And we have Mike Lynch. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioner Karski and Commissioner. Is the presentation, is that something that you just have in paper form, just for protocol? Is that right?
We have it electronically.
Okay, okay.
And it is showing on the screen.
I didn't know if I was going, if you were going to share the screen, or if that's something that you're just going to follow along. But but thank you very much for your time today. Just want to take a few moments to discuss Forward Sioux Falls. And and first of all, Forward Sioux Falls, just as by definition, is a joint venture between the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber and the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, created in nineteen eighty-seven. And every five years, there is a capital campaign throughout the Sioux Falls area. And since nineteen eighty-seven, over fifty-two million dollars has been raised, and those dollars are put toward the initiatives over the next five years. We have around four hundred investors currently in the program. And we are actually on the cusp of embarking upon our public portion of our campaign, which we'll talk about here in just a little bit. But, you know, ultimately, Forward Sioux Falls has really surpassed a lot of expectations. I think that can, you know, be, you know, widely acknowledged. However, we're not going to take full credit for everything. There's a lot of partners. It's a huge collaborative effort, public-private partnership. But really, Forward Sioux Falls, being that economic development program, has assisted Sioux Falls in the way of attracting people to our area, attracting businesses to our area, and really placing Sioux Falls from, I would say, what it used to be on a more regional scale to now more nationally recognized. So I talk about the collaborative spirit, the public-private funding comparison is something that is a little unique for us compared to many other communities throughout the country. On average, economic development programs like this garner about sixty-one percent of the funding from public sources. And Forward Sioux Falls is about twenty-one percent. So it's it's still, it's a great public-private partnership, but just wanted to kind of provide that that analysis. In twenty fifteen, Forward Sioux Falls embarked upon a study. Market Street Services was the company that did that. And it just really took a look at what we what we really need to move the community forward as it relates to economic development. And an outcome of that was the Strategic Workforce Action Agenda, which primarily involved talent, attraction, workforce development, workforce retention, and then, of course, you know, drawing businesses to our area. A lot of that work is done within the Development Foundation, as is, for example, the the national site selectors that are brought to our community, the national brokers. Again, a lot of this work done through the Development Foundation, fam tours, et cetera. Another key initiative within the Forward Sioux Falls program has been Foundation Park, and that certainly has been really out front in the news over the last several months with the announcement of Amazon coming to Foundation Park as well as CJ Foods. So by twenty twenty-two, there will be six tenants out in that park. And it's really South Dakota's only mega park comprising eight hundred twenty acres. So a lot of excitement, a lot of good momentum happening out at Foundation Park. Another key initiative is the Discovery District, the biotech and medical companies being recruited to our area. And this is, you know, and it's always been advertised as a as a methodical build-out, probably a twenty-twenty-five-year build-out. But a lot of excitement out there. Dr. Mark Brown, the new president-CEO, is doing a great job, and just a lot of things to look forward to out there as well. Advocacy, longstanding Forward Sioux Falls program. Efforts primarily conducted through the chamber. Deborah Owen is the Public Policy Director. Justin Bentez is the Public Policy Manager. Full-time lobbying and peer, representing the interests of businesses, both from the chamber, the Development Foundation, and Forward Sioux Falls, making sure that those interests are kept front of mind in the areas of economic development, visitor industry, regulation and taxes, education, housing, and workforce. And then on the local level as well, attendance at your commission meeting, city council meetings, and then close connection and communication with the federal delegation as well. Airport marketing is something that is extremely essential, as we all know. Making sure that the number of carriers and the number of flights and the types and the locations of of those destinations suit both the the public, the general public for leisure travel as well as business travel. So we work with the airport to help them market our area. And then some other initiatives within Forward Sioux Falls, support for the Zeal Center, the Quality of Place Enhancement, working with the Young Professionals Network, which continues to grow, Funding for Sioux Empire Housing Partnership, and Sioux Falls Thrive. So just a lot of great things coming out of Forward Sioux Falls. You know, we we really look at at two different slides. And for if you're looking at the presentation now, you'll notice the two slides regarding employment growth and population growth, and they really go hand in hand. If you take a look at the exponential population and employment growth from nineteen eighty-seven to the last figures that we have there in twenty nineteen, they're extremely significant. The non-farm employment growth, two hundred thirty-eight percent increase since nineteen eighty-seven, and the population growth, two hundred fifteen percent within the Sioux Falls MSA. You know, a lot of, and if we take a look at all these initiatives and all the the programs built within them and the pillars, the major pillars that we have within Forward Sioux Falls, again, not taking full credit, but if we take a look at the accolades that we've been, you know, so fortunate to experience, the number number one best place, or best small place for business and careers twelve of the last twenty years, the number one city for US in the US for young professionals. And and the competition there, you can tell, includes cities much larger, really, than Sioux Falls. Number ten best city for entrepreneurs. You know, really, the list, there seems to be coming out with a new accolade almost monthly, consistently ranked as a top one hundred place to live by livability. So lots of lots of great things that we have to be proud of. Just wanted to talk briefly about the, as I mentioned earlier, about the public campaign portion of the Forward Sioux Falls. That's going to be held February twenty-third, and it's going to be livestreamed off of the ForwardSiouxFalls.com website. So I'd really encourage all of you to to take a look at that, nine thirty AM on the twenty-third. And this particular program, after an extensive feasibility study, has determined that a fifteen-million-dollar goal is achievable. So we're going to embed many of the same initiatives contained within the last five years, the core programs, the ones that really have a lot of meat left on the bone, but also add some some new initiatives to the mix as well. And then finally, I would just end with the the last slide, again, if you're looking at the presentation, talking about the five-year strategies, goals, and outcomes. And ultimately, what that comes down to is really the projected ROI. For every one dollar invested within the private sector, thirteen dollars and twenty-seven cents is returned. And in the private, I'm sorry, the public sector, for every one dollar that is invested, nine dollars and twenty-eight cents is returned. So you'll also see the annual tax revenue increases for Minnehaw and Lincoln Counties there. So we just have a lot, I think, to feel good about, a lot of great momentum. And again, we just very much appreciate the the public-private partnerships that we experience, the collaborative efforts that we have, and of course, for your investment from Minnehaw County. So with that, I would entertain any questions if you have them.
Questions for Mike? Commissioner Bender?
It's not really a question. I just want to thank you for the work that you do. This has been a model across the US, the Development Foundation and the work that you guys have done in Forward Sioux Falls. And so I really appreciate the work that you do, and I think we have all seen, it's not a lot of hype, but we do really see the return on the investment you guys provide. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bender. And and I would add, and many of you may know this, but we recently came out with the Forward Sioux Falls book. We really wanted to encapsulate the the legacy, the history of Forward Sioux Falls, but also wanted to inform the younger generation of leaders how impactful the program has been throughout the last thirty-four years and, you know, try and inspire them to carry that torch forward. So would encourage you to to take a look at that. It's actually going to be provided for all investors as well as others who may wish to purchase it. It is available on Amazon.
Commissioner Benega?
I just want to thank you also, Mike. Obviously, the county, both Lincoln and Minnehaw County benefit dramatically by the investment that the city and the county make in this, I guess, partnership, because frankly, that is the county's major revenue source, and that growth is helping us maintain the budget on a balanced budget opportunity. And the return on investment is significant to the fact that the county, obviously, is seeing growth, and we we appreciate your partnership.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Benega.
And I'm going to jump on that bandwagon, too. You know, Sioux Falls in the last almost forty years has seen great things happen. It's because of visionaries. I've read the book. I am an investor in Forward Sioux Falls. And these things don't happen by accident, you know, just out of random, that chance or fate leads us to successes that have occurred. They happen because a lot of people with shovels and digging in and working together and putting their shoulders and noses and whatever acronym you want to use, we're getting things done here. And it takes leadership. We appreciate your organization in making this happen and bringing everybody together, because it's people that compete on a business basis, daily, that still put their money into the same pot and say, let's make this happen. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Karski. Yeah, it's just a testament to this this community, this area, and it's it's truly remarkable. And our our campaign management company, who's been with us now for the eighth program, all of our programs, really sees us among their, you know, over one hundred, one hundred thirty-plus organizations that they represent. They've always recognized Forward Sioux Falls as the gold standard. And and again, it's the it's the people and the organizations that make it happen. So thanks for those kind words.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you. And again, if you have questions, you can reach out to Mike or, yeah, the same thing, Mike. We're always available if you want to talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
All righty. Again, we have another briefing from the Helpline Center, Janet Kittams. Morning, Janet. We're asking our presenters to kind of limit it to that ten-minute range, if you don't mind. Long agenda today, so welcome.
Absolutely. Good morning to everybody. Happy to be here today to give you a little bit of an update on the Helpline Center. I know you have my slide presentation in front of you, and my first couple of slides are just introductory slides about the Helpline Center, which I think all of you are familiar with, but our three core service areas include two-one-one, the Volunteer Connections Program, and our suicide prevention work. And then I put a slide in quickly that just talks about two-one-one in the Sioux Empire. Obviously, we have been here in the Sioux Empire since two thousand and one, but just this past year, in twenty twenty, in July, two-one-one did go statewide across South Dakota, so we're accessible to all the residents of the state. And then my next slide just gives a little bit about what is two-one-one, which I think you all know, but we answer their phones twenty-four hours a day, providing connections to nonprofit resources and government resources, making sure people get the help that they need. We are there, obviously, during times of disaster, which is going to lead me into my next slide. Twenty twenty was a very interesting and very, very, very busy year for the Helpline Center, so I want to kind of talk mostly about what we have seen this past year. There's a slide that shows the data dashboard from our website. This is a recent development. We put this up just a couple of months ago to kind of share our data with everybody if they would like to look at it. And so what you're going to see on this bar chart is January twenty twenty through December of twenty twenty, and you'll see how we started the year, pretty typical, pretty normal with our call volume. And then immediately, it spiked when the pandemic hit the Sioux Empire and South Dakota area. And our call volume was pretty high through the spring, kind of went down a little bit in the summer months, but then really hit some of its highest points in November and December with our call volume and the questions that we were answering. So these numbers, there's a hundred, over a hundred and ten thousand contacts that are on this graph. Those come from our three main phone lines that we answer. Most of those calls come from two-one-one, but we also answer the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline for the state of South Dakota. And then we have also partnered with the Department of Health, and we answer the COVID-nineteen information line. So I'm going to jump to the next slide, which just kind of drills down a little bit more on the call volume that we've seen related to the pandemic or COVID-nineteen. This slide, the the next one up there, shows that out of those a hundred and ten thousand contacts, just over ninety-five thousand of them were directly related to COVID. So that is when we have spent most of the year addressing the phones. And you can see month by month, the actual call volume that we experienced. And you'll see some of those highest months occurred towards the end of the year in November and December with the call volume. And that's when we were seeing the peak kind of infection rate in the state. So just to kind of give you a window into what we were answering for folks over the phone, it's certainly evolved and changed over the the time, but lots of questions about the virus, lots of questions about quarantining, lots of questions on how to stay safe, questions on just pure isolation, anxiety, stress, just people struggling to to just kind of get through the the day. And so we spent a lot of time just kind of talking with people, heard a lot of people that were, in addition to being anxious and stressed, we talked with a lot of angry people. A lot of times, that's a stress reaction to what's going on, is that emotion of anger. And so I have to give kudos to my staff for listening to people yell at them for no reason, but just because they were frustrated with what was going on in in the world with the pandemic. But we we were there, we listened, we calmed people down, provided them the information, and helped them understand the best that we knew with the latest information that was coming out from the CDC. So in addition to that, there's a lot of calls that we began receiving after people lost their jobs, after they were so tremendous needs for rent, housing assistance, for food, for utility assistance. So just kind of an unbelievable amount of people that were reaching out for for help. And many of these calls were from people who have never asked for help before, and that's how they would start the phone conversation with us. I've never had to do this before. I've never had to ask for help, but I can't pay my rent, and I don't know what to do. So we were glad that we were there as two-one-one to answer those phone calls and provide help to the people that they needed them, that needed it. I'm going to jump just a little bit quickly. There's a slide that talks about the top ten needs. And so that you'll see that talks about housing, obviously, being one of the largest needs that we saw. And I put the other years up there just to kind of give you a comparison of what we've seen the past couple of years. So like in twenty nineteen, probably just under five thousand phone calls of our, we had needs identified for food. And what you'll notice is that jumped to over twenty-four thousand in twenty twenty. Housing was just over eight thousand a normal year, and that's over, you know, twenty-three thousand. So huge numbers of of needs out there for folks, and you can also see a jump with the utility assistance, which also isn't a surprise. So the, we provided a lot of assistance for the One Sioux Falls Fund when that was created through the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation and kind of led the charge by Mayor Paul here in Sioux Falls. And two-one-one served as the initial point of contact for that. So we answered thousands of phone calls and helped process thousands of applications initially to get people that immediate housing assistance. So that was a very critical program to have in place, because people needed that assistance right away to to make sure that they they stayed housed, and we were happy to provide that support. So in addition to that, I just included some other statistics in there a little bit that talk more about some of the other needs that we saw. But I think I've painted a little bit of a picture of the calls that we've been answering. I then, the last part of my slides are a couple of different Um, I, then the last part of my slides are a couple of different, very genuine, supportive thank you notes back to my, my staff, um, and the Helpline Center for just the work that we did over the past year. Um, and so, um, really the, um, kudos goes to all of my staff. I can't, I cannot thank them enough and tell you how dedicated those staff members were, um, coming in long, long hours, uh, working tirelessly to answer phone call after phone call after phone call with no break in between to make sure that people got the, the help that they, they needed. And we, um, they truly were, um, heroes and continue to be. Our call volume is still high. Uh, we're still answering over 2,000 phone calls a week from people who need information, resources and support. A lot of questions now, of course, about vaccines, but still a tremendous number of calls for assistance with housing, rent, um, food and other kind of basic needs. So, um, the needs are still out there in our community, um, and 211 is happy to be there, um, to support them. So with that, I will end it. I know you have a busy agenda, but I just wanted to kind of give you a window into what the past year has been like for, um, 211 and the Helpline Center.
Thank you, Janet. Some powerful testimonials in there, so just, you know, good stuff to read. Thank you. Comments? Commissioner Roberger.
Just one comment. Thank you, Janet, for, um, talking to us this morning. And I thank you also to the State of South Dakota and the legislators for finally realizing the importance of 211 statewide and moving that. And it was very timely that this happened just before our pandemic and could be put into place in July. You think of all those other counties that didn't have access to 211 and how popular this is. And I know you were working on that for a long time. I was in peer one time when you were up there testifying and turned away for the State of South Dakota. So I'm very thankful that many people finally realized the importance of this program. So thanks again.
Yeah, I am too. It was, it was very good timing that, um, we received some state funding to bring it statewide, um, yeah, met a tremendous need for all the residents.
Commissioner Bender.
And I'd just also like to echo and thank, um, your staff, just as you did, because I think, um, just having, trying to navigate COVID at the county, we realized how, um, much information changed from day to day, how stressed people were. And I think there's a little bit of a, I think I'm guilty of a perception that everybody you talk to is very thankful and, and, um, all you get are roses and, and, um, sweet remarks. And, and there was a lot of anger out there. There's a lot of frustration and to, for your staff to have to deal with that when they had no control, um, over what was happening either, I just, is remarkable. Honestly, I think it's just remarkable. So thank you very much.
I guess I have a question. Go ahead, Janet. I'm sorry.
So I just said, thank you.
I guess I have a question. You know, the One Sioux Falls Fund and, um, the donations, you know, the prior briefing was from Forward Sioux Falls and businesses donating, but the Ford, the One Sioux Falls Fund, it was a lot of individuals contributing. Can they contribute by contacting your office? How does that work?
Sure. Um, yes, there was a lot of individual give off to that fund and the fund is still active. It is through the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation, so people can, um, still make , uh, donations to that. And the, um, the fund is still, um, providing assistance to folks, um, not as much as it was in the initial stages of the pandemic, but there certainly are people out there who still need help and are accessing those dollars.
Definitely with housing and with the weather, the way it is, the utilities. I mean, what the county sees in utility assistance and what the One Sioux Falls Fund has been able to help and assist in that. And, um, our community, we try to help each other and take care of each other. So it's the great way to do it. And, uh, if you're looking for a place that has a good track record of making the money work, donate it there is my advice. So any other comments, questions? Commissioner Benega.
Uh, Janet, I'll also say thank you because I do know from referrals that we get and all the time that you guys make a great partner in helping us get to the people we serve. Uh, it's an incredible amount of, uh, activity. And if you look at where we were in 2018, uh, 2020, I mean, to see food eight times larger and housing four times as large and information and utilities, all the numbers are dramatic increases. And frankly, that wouldn't happen unless someone was coordinating all of that. So thank you for your help.
Very welcome.
Thank you, Janet. You got a lot of work to do, obviously, so we won't keep you from it, but we appreciate you being here. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Alrighty. We will move on to consider a resolution to establish record of the 2021 election polling places in Minnehaha County. Do we have an election in 2021?
Uh, we do not.
Okay. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, uh, Ben Kite, Minnehaha County Auditor. So yeah, I have two resolutions for you today. The first one is to review, um, and approve the polling places, which is required by statute on an annual basis. So the Auditor's Office is just requesting your approval for the 2021 polling places. The locations are consistent with the 2020 locations. Just look for your approval on that resolution.
Okay. Do we have a, the resolution doesn't need to be read or anything? Well, good, because Ben would have to read it.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alrighty. We need a roll call vote.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bar.
I just want to say, Ben, that I think some of our election issues in the past have been caused by co-locating, uh, precincts in the same location. So, you know, where you have, uh, Precincts 51 and 52 both voting at the, the same church, I think that, uh, opens the door for some mistakes to be made. And obviously, uh, you want to not have any mistakes. I don't want to have any mistakes. Uh, and so I just want to point that out.
All right. Thank you. We'll consider that when we, um, go forward.
It is an extensive list. All right. We have a motion in a second and roll call vote.
Bar.
Hi.
Bender.
Hi.
Benega.
Hi.
Heiburger.
Hi.
Karski.
Hi.
Motion carries. And then the second one for Mr. Kite is, uh, resolution to establish rates of pay for 2021 election workers and rental rates for polling locations.
Yeah. So as, uh, required by state statute, we, uh, the Auditor's Office is, um, to present, they commissioned the, uh, rate, uh, pay rates for election workers. That should have been done on, on the first, your first meeting, but we're getting around to it now. But, uh, the Auditor's Office is requesting that the rate of pay for the election workers be set for 2021. The pay rates are consistent with 2020. Uh, we're proposing two changes to the previous election worker pay resolution from 2020. Uh, the first one is to add the position of absentee precinct superintendent. So this position would be in charge of the absentee precinct and its workers who open the absentee ballots. The Auditor's Office, uh, anticipates continuing high use of absentee, um, numbers and the workers required to open those ballots. So in 2020, the Auditor's Office employed anywhere between 200 to 300 absentee workers that the absentee precinct, uh, superintendent oversaw. And I think last year that was, um, our, uh, one of our former auditors, the name escapes me right now, um, that, who is the, who, who served that role. But anyway, the increased responsibility of this position deserves some recognition through additional pay. And I think we are recommending at least this time $13 an hour for that position. Uh, we'll reevaluate that along with all the other pay scales, uh, at the end of the year, um, to see if they're still appropriate for 2022. Uh, the other change we're, um, recommending is to add the reimbursement, reimbursement category for mileage related to delivering the poll books and poll boxes back to the, to the courthouse for counting. Uh, the mileage reimbursement rate would be consistent with, uh, South Dakota Code of Codified Law. Uh, previously, this reimbursement category is not listed in the election worker pay resolution, but is consistent with the election worker reimbursement law. So I think in the past, we actually did reimburse people. It just wasn't listed on the resolution. So we would just.
Comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. I guess I have a question. I'm seeing, I think I'm seeing some new stuff on here, right, Ben?
Yeah, there's two, two new items, right? The, um, absentee superintendent and the, uh, mileage reimbursement.
Okay, okay.
But the rates of pay are consistent with the 2020 election.
These people put in some long hours and, um, for the most part, they're, based on the rate of pay, they're almost volunteers, so.
Very close. Yes, they don't do it for the compensation. That's correct.
All right. Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Bender.
Hi.
Benega.
Hi.
Heiburger.
Hi.
Bar.
Hi.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ben.
Yep.
All right. We have, we looking for a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the Department of Social Services and the Minnehaha County Jail for Restoration to Competency Program Services. And I believe we have Sheriff Milstead and Mike Mattson on Zoom right now. Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. The measures before you is an agreement between the South Dakota Department of Social Services and the Minnehaha County Jail for the establishment of a jail-based competency restoration program. As you may recall, Commissioner Heiburger and I have been part of Chief, Chief Justice Gilbertson's Oversight Council for Improving the Criminal Justice Response to People or Persons with Mental Illness. Uh, this has been several years in the making and, uh, one of the, one of the items that we began to work on in particular was the long delays that we were seeing, uh, between the time someone was, uh, required to be, uh, um, evaluated for competency to stand trial and the time that person would actually receive that, uh, competency evaluation. So when we started, um, there, there were, there were long stays in jail between that time when, uh, uh, they were waiting to be evaluated. In fact, it wasn't, wasn't unusual for an individual to have to wait in jail, stay in jail for four to six months, waiting to have an evaluation done to see if that person is competent to stand trial. Since the reform occurred as a result of the work with that Oversight Council, they changed the number of competency evaluators from six to 32, and that four to six month wait has been decreased to 44 days. So we've made great progress in that area, uh, keeping people from lingering in jail, waiting to simply be evaluated for competency. But therein, there is another problem. The next problem is available beds at the Human Services Center in Yankton for competency restoration. Um, again, we're seeing long waits, long stays, uh, in jail, staying in jail, waiting for a bed to open up at HSC. And it was, uh, the, the long wait time, um, we're finding between 70 and 175 additional days in jail before these individuals are being able to be transferred to HSC for competency restoration. Remember, that's at about $97 a day for jail, for jail services. Remember, it's not a therapeutic environment in the jail and there's not a service provided during that other than critical, uh, health services and mental health services. So, um, working with the Department of Social Services, working with the Oversight Council, we were able to get the law changed last year to allow for, uh, certain individuals to be, to receive competency restoration in a jail-based setting. And, um, so our plan is to move forward with that. It's been a long, uh, long process to get to this point. Uh, I'm very comfortable with the, with what the plan is. We think we can significantly reduce the, the time people linger in jail now waiting for a bed at HSC. But critical to the, this is, uh, this agreement are some key points. First of all, and I don't want to go through the whole thing. I know you have a, a long meeting, but some of them are key points. First, right in the opening paragraphs of, of the agreement, it talks about that this is, this is coming because of a need for the timely restoration to competency program for defendants that are found, found to be incompetent. And also, it's a result of the high demand for limited hospital beds for treatment of defendants who are mentally incompetent. So the DSS sought to partner with us. We've been working with them to do that. And then some of the key components of the agreement is the DSS has a lot of responsibilities in this agreement. They're going to maintain legal custody of the defendants who are going to be receiving the jail-based restoration. They're going to, uh, allow us to provide that competency restoration. It will be done through our, uh, through our jail healthcare provider. And so they're going to train our healthcare provider to provide the competency restoration services. They will identify, uh, individuals who are eligible for jail-based competency restoration services, and they've assured us that that will not be individuals who have severe mental illness. Uh, there are, uh, components in this agreement. If a person is not able to be restored to competency within a set period of time, that they will then transfer that individual to HSC. Um, so this is, this, this agreement, uh, is, is gonna not only provide better service for these individuals who need to be restored to competency, but it'll also save the taxpayers' dollars, whether it's state tax dollars or county tax dollars, it's going to save dollars because we're greatly narrowing the amount of time people are going to sit in jail. During the time that they're going through their competency restorations in our jail, DSS is going to pick up our daily rate, currently is about $97. Um, they will pay that because quite frankly, that's a fraction of what a, what a day at HSC costs, uh, in taxpayer funds. So they will pay for any additional expenses that we have. They're going to pay to train our staff. They're going to pay for extra medical, uh, uh, or, or staff time, um, that our provider, our healthcare provider uses for competency restoration. Um, we've, uh, I, I've looked into this, um, and actually have an acquaintance of mine that is a sheriff in San Bernardino County, California, much larger facility, but in fact, California suffers with the same issue that we have, and that is, uh, the overcrowding and lack of available beds and, and, uh, for competency restoration. And as such, Sheriff, uh, McMahon in San Bernardino has 152-bed competency restoration unit in his jail system, uh, and it works very well. Takes prisoners from all over the, the, the area of, of San Bernardino County and assists them to get these people through the system faster and justice and into the, you know, so that they can have their day in court and have the right to a speedy trial so that they don't linger in jail. And so we see this as a very positive step. I really appreciate, you know, um, first of all, the Department of Social Services worked really hard with us on that. It wasn't easy. We put the, our state's attorney's office, um, was actively involved, back and forth with the state because of the devil's in the details, but I think we're there. I think we have a good agreement. Uh, they will have a separate agreement with our healthcare provider, um, but this is our, our step forward and I, I stand by and Gordon Mattson stands by. Should you have any questions?
All right. Commissioner Heiburger, I know you've been involved in this for quite some time, so I'm sure you have something to say.
Yeah. Thank the sheriff for all the work that he did on this because it started as a small idea and they have spent a lot of time, this, this group has been together for about three years and a lot of work has gone into this particular, um, idea. It's a win-win for a lot of different people, not, and, you know, mainly the people in jail that are sitting there waiting to have their day in court. Sheriff, could you just briefly explain to people who don't understand what a competency report is or a comp, restoration to competency? When I came on this board, I didn't know what that meant and I was surprised by, it wasn't, I don't want to say as big a deal as I thought, but it isn't. It's, so would you just explain what a competence, competency restoration actually entails?
And before you do that, Sheriff, I, I'm on the same page as Commissioner Heiburger. You know, a civics lesson in why competency is important. I, I think most people don't maybe fully grasp what, what we're doing here and, and why it is important.
Well, two things. One of them is that, that question would be best answered by an attorney like, uh, Eric Vog or, or, or our state's attorney. I will, I will touch lightly on it, and that is that, um, it's, it's very key for us that the DSS is going to evaluate, pre-evaluate these individuals to make sure that they don't have severe mental illness because they want those individuals in HSC or Human Services Center once there's an available bed. But there's a struggle for those beds, it's very difficult to get in. Competency restoration on an individual that has mental illness or severe mental illness doesn't necessarily eliminate their mental illness. It, it, it's to, it's to make them aware and, and get them to the level that they understand the justice system, they understand the authority of the courts, the judge, the jury, and, and what they are dealing with and what they are facing. It is not a cure for mental illness. And so that's not what we're doing in the jail. We'll be restoring them to be competent to stand trial. Um, and, and a lot of it is, is, a lot of it is a civics lesson, uh, fairly intense to, for someone who doesn't understand what the authority of the courts is, what, what they're facing, what the, you know, what is going to occur in the courtroom, what the outcome could be. Um, so again, those, that question would be. be. So again, those, that question would be best answered by an attorney, but I took a shot at, at understanding what's going to happen. And interestingly enough, in, at HSC, these individuals are not isolated in a, a single cells or a single area. They're all put in one, they, they're a general population. That's the way it will be in our jail. There won't be one competency restoration housing area. We classify people by their risk, by their, you know, all, all different, you know, their, the nature of their charge, their vulnerabilities. So there's a lot of things that go into a classification. We'll classify them using our normal jail-based classification system. That's how they will be housed. Then through the week, they'll receive several hours of competency restoration, interaction with, with the medical staff. And then that typically lasts maybe 40, 40 days or so, 45 days is a, is a fairly normal amount of time it takes for competency restoration. Sometimes it goes longer than that. But during that time, they'll be in the general population of the jail and just receiving this special care and instruction about competency, about their competency and making sure that they understand the charges against them and the process of the courts. Then the, HSC is actually going to be the one that will evaluate them, reevaluate them to see if they are now competent to stand trial. So that won't be on our staff. So they're going to, they're going to triage the individuals and decide who, who's appropriate for jail-based competency restoration. They're going to help us develop and train us in the program, and then they will evaluate individuals and decide if they've been restored to competency and are able to then go to court. This, this, the other thing that this really does is it really speeds up their availability to go to, to go to court, to get to court. They're not sitting in jail for hundreds of days waiting, you know, first it was waiting to be evaluated, and second it was waiting to be restored. And, and so this is a much better thing, I think, for the defendants as well. So I don't know if you have an attorney. I can't see who's there right now, but if somebody could maybe speak and clarify a little bit on the legal side of competency restoration, but that's my, that's my shot at it.
I think you did a great job. Does anybody want to add to that?
Sheriff, we just had, with keeping the sheriff's admonition to keep this presentation down to 10 minutes or less, the sheriff put an excellent, short of a full-length meeting, which could literally go hours, he's so nice and very well.
Great. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Barth?
I've got to say, this has been great progress since Commissioner Hyburger and the sheriff started working on it. And to a great extent, the state has underfunded things down at, at the HSC and left it up to us. And our choice then was to just leave people in jail for not days, months, many months. And that's before they've even gone to trial or, or whatever. It's, it's so important that we make this, this progress, and maybe we can even do better in the future. But the sheriff and Commissioner Hyburger, especially along with Judge Gilbertson, really a lot of credit goes to them, but we need the legislature to step up and take care of their end of things.
All right. No roll call vote on this one? Okay. So I'm just looking for a motion in a second to approve the signing of the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Consider a motion to authorize the Emergency Management Department to apply for the 2021 Homeland Security Grant on behalf of the sheriff's office, Minnehaw County Courthouse, and Sioux Falls Police Department. The man we never like to see, Jason Guerman.
Hello, Jason Guerman, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. This is something that we do every year. Emergency management is kind of the point of contact for this. So we kind of take the, take the ball and, and get this done for the agencies that need this. So without going through the whole thing, I'm, I'm just going to add that the state allocates money from the federal government, and so much comes to our region. And what'll happen in March is we'll get together, the sheriff and I, with the other sheriffs and emergency managers through our region, and decide what to fund and what not to fund. So some of the amounts that you may have seen on that application are not going to be exact because there may be a partial funding. Say, you know, Minnehaw County wants $100,000 worth of radios. We may decide that, you know what, we're only going to buy $50,000 worth of radios. So just so you know, those, those monetary views are not locked in solid, but that's, that's how the, the, the system works, so.
Make a motion to authorize Emergency Management to apply for this grant for, for our county.
Second. Motion in a second.
Comment when he's, when we're done with this.
Your turn, Commissioner.
Well, I just wanted to ask Jason, I understand that we're having an emergency power shortage currently in the state, and, and so I, I'd like to ask that after we vote on, on the, on this application.
Okay. So roll call vote on the motion.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karstine?
Aye. Motion carries and Commissioner Barth.
Mr. Chairman, again, Jason, what's going on with power?
Well, I've never seen anything like this before, especially in this area, but I think it's, it's such a large area that it's affecting, you know, down to Texas. And, and right now, Excel Energy is fine. However, Southeast, which I'm part of Southeast where I live, is going to have these rolling brownouts or whatever you want to call them. So I just got off the phone with the emergency manager for the city of Sioux Falls, Regan Smith. There may be some issues in the south end of the city that have Southeast for maybe some stoplight issues and so forth and so on. But, you know, hopefully we'll get through this in the next few days, and it's supposed to warm up a little.
Commissioner?
Just want to comment, Jason. I think we've had more unique disasters since you got in than we've ever had before.
I, I can't deny that at all.
No reflection on you. And we, we welcome you for regular business, routine business, and hopefully we don't have to see you more than that. But we're glad you are where you are, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to apply for the fiscal year 20 SCAAP grant. Joe Bosman. Oh, there he is, in person.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the sheriff's office. The first item I have for you is a request for our sheriff's office to apply for the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, or in the classic federal fashion, we got to put an acronym on it called the SCAP grant, we call it. What it is, is we submit data to the federal government based on the number of criminal aliens that were not born in the United States, based on the number of days that they sat while convicted, coupled with the payroll and the costs that the county has to incur to house these individuals that are not legal residents. And as such, the formula is generated, and the federal government will authorize a reimbursement in the form of a grant award that can be used for correctional purposes. This is an annual grant that we've had the benefit of applying for, for several years, every year, and the payout ranges anywhere between $27,000 to $43,000 each time. So we do find value in the work that it takes to submit the application.
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions, comments? Roll call vote.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karstine?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Up there, ah, we have more. Authorize the chair to sign the equitable sharing agreement and certification for FY 21. Joe?
So this here is an annual report that we are required to submit to the Department of Justice as part of our participation in the asset forfeiture program, which is something that if we, as a local jurisdiction, the law enforcement agency, participate with the federal government in a larger scale investigation, that eventually the feds take over, resulting perhaps asset or funds forfeiture throughout the court process, we could be entitled to some share of that seized forfeiture funny, money. And they determine that based on our level of investigation help that we provided. And there, this is something that we don't see funds being dispersed to us very often. However, it does require an annual report certification that just shows that we are tracking any money that is still on hand or how we've spent it, and if it's done appropriately, and certifying that we're having audit check processes in place. So we complete this audit requirement with our, Kim Adamson at the Utter's office, and submit this on an annual basis with your approval.
Questions? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Not sure why we have the word equitable in these things.
All right. DJ Boothey, we have a brief, briefing from the Highway Department. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This is the 2021 Highway Department Update Briefing. Going to talk about some emerging needs and issues, and also some future budget requests. I'm not sure. Can you guys see the PowerPoint presentation on your screens?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I can't see them on my screen. So going into the emerging needs and issues, the first one that we'll be addressing is a building project. Highway facility project is moving along in the design. The new facility will house the administration, vehicle and equipment maintenance shop, and warm storage for snowplows. This project is expected to begin construction this spring and be completed in the spring of 2022. We recently held the gravel pit auction, and that sold for $2,025,000. We're really excited about that because it's, the amount that it sold for is a lot higher than what we expected. The legislature is, is currently considering a bill to fund a road project accessing the newly constructed Veteran Cemetery. The Veteran Cemetery is supposed to open up, I think, next month, either March or April. The road is Slip Up Creek Road, and they're looking for $4.1 million through legislative funding. And that road would likely be owned and maintained by Minnehaw County once it's completed. And there's also some interest in trying to put together a bill to fund all or a portion of the Maple Park Road project. That's been a project that we've talked about for a few years, and the total cost of that project is around $16.3 million as it's currently estimated. Personnel in the Highway Department, the Auditor's Office, and IT, they're currently training and implementing different, different modules within Tyler Munis, our accounting software. We're working on the projects module, the contracts module, and the requisitions module. And those are all important because that will allow us to really better track our, our current year budget, our future budgeting, and then isolate those funding things with our, with our projects. And so we also have a desire to implement the time cards in Tyler Munis next year after we move into the new building. Using Munis' time cards will allow us to better track our labor costs for our maintenance projects in our cost accounting system. Let's hope we can go to the next slide there. Future budget request. With our building project, we, during the concept planning portion of the building project, we removed several pieces of equipment from the project in order to get it, the project as a whole within the budget. The equipment listed here is the air compressor, some parts room storage, woke fluid system. The woke fluid system is where we store oil and, and antifreeze and that, that type of thing, and the racking system for the plows. The, the equipment that was pulled out, the estimates that are listed there on the slide came from Henry Carlson. We will be putting some equipment requests or, or requests into our 2022 budget to purchase these things. The cost probably won't be as high as what Henry, Henry Carlson had for most of these things. We're currently working with vendors to, to get estimates, so we're prepared for the 2022 budget process. And the preliminary cost information that we've seen so far from, from vendors indicate that the request will be likely less than the Henry Carlson estimates. The next slide there, some additional future budget requests. For equipment, next year, we typically do two snowplow trucks every single year. Next year, we also have a front-end loader and three-quarter ton crew pickup. That is the equipment that's been listed in our long-range plan for next year. We'll be evaluating the equipment that's listed to determine if it should remain in the 22, 2022 budget. We'll also be evaluating whether a potential lease option for the front-end loader is, it makes more financial sense than, than the actual purchase. The purchase is probably around $250,000, and so it's a, a pretty expensive piece of equipment for us. The next slide there, the future budget requests for large capital projects. We have quite a few large projects next year. The Phase 1 of County Highway 149, reconstruction project from County Highway 122, which is where we left off with the previous reconstruction project on 149. We'll go north about, just over five miles into Colton. That's the first phase, so just the grading phase and, and some culverts. And that project's estimated to be $2.5 million. And then we have some bridge improvement grant program applications into the state right now for three bridge replacements. And the total county portion of, of those projects would be about $273,000. That's estimated in the application. And then one or two bridge improvement grant preservation projects. Those are very large projects, even though they're just preservation projects, include some deck replacements. So the county portion of those projects would be $580,000 for both, and that would be construction in 2022. We have those applications into the state right now, like I said, and we're expecting to hear back from the State Transportation Commission, probably within the next couple of weeks, if they're able to address the applications during the February Transportation Commission meeting. And that's what we're expecting. It could be that they address those applications in the March Transportation Commission meeting. And then last but not least, our payment preservation program. We have a cracked seal project, which is about 42 miles, an asphalt overlay project, which is six miles, and a chip seal project, which is 36 miles. So a big program, hopefully for next year. With that, that's a, a quick summary of our, our department for 2021, and I'll stand by for any questions if anyone has any questions.
Questions for DJ? Commissioner Bender?
Not so much a question, but just a thank you to you and your staff. You guys are doing a pretty heavy lift this year between the new building and the ERP transitions that you're doing and, and your regular work. And so just know that it's taken a lot of extra effort from your team out there, and just want to thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll pass that along to the staff.
Other questions? Thank you, DJ. I know there's some big things going on, that Maple Park project, or Park Maple project, or whatever we're going to call it. Hopefully, we can get that to work. And these are roads that currently aren't county roads, that one, and the Veteran Cemetery, that would be, come into our inventory, basically, to maintain. But both of them, in my mind, absolutely necessary for economic development and to take care of the promises and commitments to the citizens of the county. So appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
All righty. Moving on then. A briefing on the upcoming equalization boards and processes. Morning, Chris.
Good morning, Chris.
We're all excited about this.
Equalization, yeah. This is going to be kind of a two-part one. The, the other memo that I'd supplied to you covers some other topics. So I'm just going to start with that one first. And it's more or less our year-end rollout of, of Equalization Office and what we've accomplished a little bit. I'd like to report, and I'm happy to report, that for the 2021 assessment, we have finally completed our conversion from AS400 to ProVal in its entirety. All values going out on the assessment notices here soon are coming from ProVal. With that, as we've, as we've seen in the last year and the year before that, and every year they've converted a little bit and a little bit, there is some value fluctuations with that, you know. The values weren't wrong in the past. They're not wrong now. It's just redefining and looking at those from one software program and cost analysis to another program, and they don't always shake out equally. So just making the, the board and everyone else aware, there is going to be some value fluctuations, mainly in the townships this year with those. They've all been analyzed and, and pushed back to the current market study in accordance with SDCL. So next thing that we've kind of completed this year, Sioux Falls and all small, well, Sioux Falls, all residential land. We had a lot of varying inconsistencies in land valuations and, and rates on a, on a front-foot method. We took this on. It wasn't really on the agenda, but we discovered it and stumbled across it. So we have converted all residential land in Sioux Falls to a square-foot method and, and equalized that across. No real market analysis done on that. It was simply taking the values that were there, as they stood, compared them to square foot, pushed them back to square foot. So it's, there's going to be some value fluctuations with those two, but it is for fairness and equality. Now, similar-sized lots in the same neighborhood are going to be the same value. Another big one that we took on this year is redefining our neighborhood boundaries. I've mentioned that to the board several times in the past. We had overly large neighborhoods. I mean, some of our neighborhoods were 2,600 parcels, 3,000 parcels, big study areas. So every sale in that area was affecting everybody's values. We have made those smaller, more homogeneous study areas. We targeted 700 parcels per study group area. Some are a little smaller, some are a little larger, depending on, on the types and styles and age. Some are a little smaller, some are a little larger, depending on the types and styles and ages of homes in those areas. But again, we are creating a more fair and equitable system. Now you are not going to be valued against somebody two miles away. You're going to be valued in a more, in a closer proximity to your property. So again, with this, there's going to be some minor value fluctuations. You know, we're finding areas, one area that required adjustment and another area didn't. But when they were together as one, they all got one adjustment. Now we are able to put the Band-Aid, if you will, on where the bleeding is occurring. So going to be some minor value fluctuations there. We consider that to be more horizontal equity, you know, we are equalizing horizontally. The next one is we redefined our houses. Now we are talking more vertical equity. We systematically, and this is countywide, broke our houses up basically into three different groups, older homes, mid-aged homes, and newer homes. So not only did we take our big neighborhoods and make them smaller, now we are looking vertically at ages of homes. So now if you're in a smaller group, a new house, if you're in a neighborhood with new development, that new house sale is not going to be impacting the older homes. It's only going to be impacting the newer. So again, fair and equitable is our goal, and this is, this is going to probably cause the biggest major valuation fluctuations that are going to occur this year. Again, we are putting the Band-Aid on where the values needed to be applied. Not one number to everyone, smaller groups vertically. We are creating a much more fair and equal process. With that, just kind of the broad overview where we ended last year and are beginning this year indicates that Minnehaha County as a whole, our value increase is approximately 5.64% in the market. So that's good for the county. It's good for our office. It's good for everybody as a whole that the, and everyone's aware that the market is very strong right now. If you have a home and it's going to sell, it's probably going to sell for more than it was assessed at. So 5.64 is the number that we calculated as a market increase. Any questions on any of that so far?
Commissioner Barth.
Thank you. Chris, I appreciate you being here. And one thing that citizens are constantly concerned about is if their valuation increases, they think their taxes will increase. That's not always the case, because we may not raise taxes, and we're spreading the amount we're raising or levying over the whole community. And if everybody's value goes up, your taxes all stay the same. And so your valuation is just one aspect of what you're going to pay. And again, I just am saying that because people will be all excited that their value went up.
Yes, very, very good point. My job in our office, our office's mission, our goal, is fair and equal. That is the foundation of this. So if you've got somebody that has a high-dollar home and somebody that has a low-dollar home, there should be a discrepancy in those tax bills as they come. They are valued according to market value, according to what they would sell for, our analysis of what they would sell for. And you're exactly right. If everybody's home in the county went up 10%, the values or your taxes really shouldn't increase because everybody is moving up. That's always not the case, though, because areas sell differently than other areas. Small towns sell differently than Sioux Falls and things like that. So every neighborhood is analyzed against itself. Some require a bigger increase because there are stronger sales there. This year, probably for the first time, one of the things that came out of this year, redefining our data structure and equalizing it and getting it much more fair and accurate. We do have some areas this year that I actually had to take one component or two components down as opposed to the last year, primarily on the newer homes. So when we had mixed neighborhoods of newer and older homes, and they're selling, we had one number that was pushing everybody up. Well, now that we can split them apart and look at those, the older homes, the more affordable homes, if you will, in a mixed neighborhood, were driving up the cost and increasing the newer home values, potentially above market value. Now that we're able to look at them individually and isolate those, the older homes needed a bigger increase, the newer homes, and I believe about 10 of our neighborhoods actually needed a small decrease. Part of the fair and equal, part of the growing pains of getting where we're at. It's going to be better for it. It's just going to feel like it's not right right now. So.
So I just had one question, and perhaps it wasn't because I wasn't listening closely enough. But if you could just go back and explain, I think people like me are going to hear the 5.64% that you talked about and just think, okay, so everybody's getting a 5.64% increase. And kind of to piggyback on what Commissioner Barth said, that's not what that means, correct?
Nope, very good point. That is countywide. When I report to the Department of Revenue, we have to look at, they care about our countywide. So what is the average growth in the county? Countywide this year, what we determined is 5.64%. But you living in a Cherry Lake neighborhood or McKennan Park neighborhood, you may see a 14% or 15% increase in your neighborhood because it is based on the way the sales around you have sold in comparison in relation to our value, our last year's value and what we needed to do. Other areas maybe see a no change or a 1% increase. Some of those may even see a slight decrease as we've broken them apart. The 5.64 is throwing everybody in the smelting pot, saying, here's where you were last year. Here's where the values increased, everyone. Individual areas, individual study groups, neighborhoods, the way we analyze are all different. Everyone is unique.
Thank you.
With that, we are onto the assessment notices as we kind of got into a little bit earlier. Right now, I don't have a definitive time on our assessment notices. Our assessment notices by law have to be postmarked by March 1st. I can tell you today, our assessment notice file is sitting at Qualified Presort. We are at their mercy now of their processing and printing and stuffing and mailing. We are targeting a February 18th or 19th, this week, mailing. The reason for getting those out early is because of these changes that we have made in the systems and the processes and redefining our study groups. We want as much time for any citizen that has questions or concerns about their valuation, whether they're going up, whether they're going down, to have ample time to reach out to our office and to give us time before the local board hearings for appeals starts to work with any of those taxpayers, answer their questions, help them understand the process, what went on, how it went on, why their value went up or down. We've got sales on our maps. Anybody in the public, if they wanted to Google the Sioux Falls minimap right now, all of our sales are loaded out there. You can click on your address and see all of the sales around you and basically what they were selling for.
That's on the open data?
That's on open data, yep.
Interesting.
It's the sale date, sale price. Can't remember if the ratio was on there or not. But all of those sales are out there on the public data source right now. So not only this year, we have three years now. As I've came on board, we've got eight, or 19, 20, and 21 out there now. So you can click on three separate years or turn all three on. Anybody that looks at that will be overwhelmed with the volume of sales that we have. It's a lot. So again, we're sending those out this week to give us time to work with any taxpayers. Some of the changes that have been mentioned this morning and prior is they used to be on a postcard. Now they're going to come on an eight-and-a-half by 11 piece of paper. If you have more than one property, if you have four properties under the same ownership, there will be four properties listed on each assessment notice. And it should be clearly laid out, parcel one, parcel two, parcel three, parcel four. And it will indicate what that is, whether it be ag, whether it be commercial, whether it be owner-occupied residential or just non-owner-occupied residential. They're going to come in a white envelope this year, stamped in red, attention, assessment notice. I think it says attention, but, so please look forward to that. Moving on a little bit, anybody that reaches out to us or feels aggrieved by their assessment notice, whether the value went up, down, whatever the case might be, has an opportunity, if they reside in this, in Minnehaha County, to appeal to the local board. Local board, any written, it has to be a written notice that they wish to appeal their valuation. That notice has to be received by the city clerks or the township clerk by March 11th, by close of business. Postmarked is considered timely. Once that, once that appeal is received, it will get scheduled. They will be notified of their time and location to appear for their appeal to be heard. Local boards will meet March 15th and conclude on March 19th of this year. After that, if anybody is still not satisfied with the results of a local board decision, they can then go on to the County Board of Equalization. Again, the County Board of Equalization, the deadline to appeal is on April 6th. Again, postmarked is considered timely. The county boards are to begin session on April 13th, and they will conclude no later than March 4th, excuse me, May 4th. County Board is allowed a three-week time period. So I'm going to digress back a little bit. That's why we are trying to get our assessment notices out a little earlier, to give us time, because there is not a big window from the deadline to appeal to work with the public before, and the short one-week window for local boards that we have to share with Lincoln County. So in my opinion, it's critical that we get them out there a little bit sooner than later to give us and the public time to work through any issues. When it comes to the county board, we have a much larger window to work on, not only to deal with the hearings, but to work with them in those instances. So with that, my staff wanted me to ensure or remind the county commissioners that we have requested your times that you're available so we can start looking at our county board scheduling to make sure that we have enough commissioners' availability for a quorum. So if everybody, if you have not responded to Nicole in our office, please let her know of the dates and times that you would be available so we can start coordinating that, so. And lastly, with that, I would just like to ask the commissioners, this year before we go into the county board hearings, there was some requests on training and things like that last year, and I'm open to input from you on what you would like to see, how long you would like to see it, what you would like to see covered in the training. Obviously, we'll give you the information in more detail at that hearing of the changes and the impacts and where the values went, the percentage changes and why we did them. But as far as the training, what does the commission feel for a length of time? The time right before the hearings, afternoon before, whatever. I'm open to suggestions.
Commissioner Abner.
In the interest of time, can we just follow up with an email instead of having a discussion now?
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely, that would work.
Questions or comments for Chris? Commissioner Benega?
I think Commissioner Bender was first, but go ahead.
I just wanted to ask if you'd considered whether you're going to allow people to appear remotely this year for hearings.
Yes, we are moving forward on that premise. As a matter of fact, when we do our township, our informational hearings, where we give the packets to the other local boards, give them all their information, their maps, the sales, all of that, their assessor books. Normally, in the past, we've scheduled two meetings, one in the afternoon, one in the evening. This year, we are doing a third. We are going to do the afternoon and the evening meeting. Then on that Friday following, we are going to do a Zoom meeting for anybody. We're encouraging them and sent out the emails for them to pick all their information up. If they didn't want to be here present or couldn't be here present for a meeting, that we are going to do a third meeting via Zoom to cover the data and the changes. As far as the appellant's, yes, we're not actively promoting it, but if there's any interest or request, we are going to try and convene those again with the Zoom. It actually worked fairly well last year. It was a little confusing at times, and when we got a little off schedule to have staff calling ahead saying, we're running a little behind, please stand by, we'll get to you. So we are anticipating doing that again this year in light of COVID.
I just want to comment that I wanted to publicly thank you for not only the software conversion that the equalization and the IT department have worked on for years. This is almost like it should be a ribbon-cutting kind of event.
I agree.
Because there's been a whole lot of hard work by your staff and IT to get this accomplished. And I want to tell you thank you and make sure your staff know that also.
We appreciate it. It has been, you know, I was hired here with a challenge, and we stepped up to the plate. And I was hopeful that it could have been done a little sooner. There's some logistics and some things and some issues in data structure and data integrity that caused us. Got as much done as we could last year. We wrapped it up this year. I can tell you, I'll stand here before you and tell you it's not perfect. It is a big, big step, though. You know, we are no longer painting the picture with a power sprayer. You know, moving forward, we're going to get out the brushes. And as we move forward, we're going to get out the small brushes and fill in the details. It's a big step. It's a big step. It sets our platform up for moving forward. You know, it enables us now to get onto a conversion to ENCODE, which again, now will cross-reference to the Auditor and Treasurer's Office as well as our office. It'll simplify things for IT of having to grab our data, put it into a program to get it to them. So we're moving. We're moving.
We appreciate it, Chris. And, you know, your office is the focal point for 13 school districts, number of municipalities that all rely on that valuation to come up with that property tax notice that individuals get for their amount due. So thank you for everything, and thank you, your staff especially. It's been a lot of work, so.
Thank you very much.
Consider a resolution to restore tax-deed property RDID 047471 to the former owner of title. Chris, Treasurer, how are you?
Good. Chris wants a Minnehaha County Treasurer. No, I'm really good, so go easy on me, you guys. This is my first time. So yes, we would like to authorize restoration of the title owner to Keith Netten. He has paid off his delinquent taxes, and so he's in good standing. So we just asked for approval on that.
All right, questions, comments?
Make a motion, but do we need to read it into the tax ID? Olivia says no, so I'm making a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
How many years' taxes was that?
Kelly, do you know what it's about? I know, I'm sorry, Christian, I'm not sure how many that was.
If it was one year, it's a pretty nice house.
Yeah, no, I know. Yeah, it's been, I'm thinking like five, but don't quote me on that, but.
Okay.
Yes.
Call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Iberger?
Aye.
Percy?
Aye.
And carries. Consider a resolution authorizing the treasurer to apply a $25 title transfer fee for processing mail-in title work.
Right. So what we are asking for is a $25 processing fee for all mail-in title work. We currently have 10 counties in South Dakota that collect this fee. And I just recently, I spoke to one of the counties yesterday, or last week, I'm sorry, Friday, and she was telling me that just in that county alone, that they were able to bring in a revenue of $100,000 just by doing this for all the out-of-state title works that's coming in. And the reason we are asking for this is because title transferring involves a lot of hours collecting information that the customer or dealer failed to send. Staff calls and emails, the majority of these clients multiple times to get information for processing. We find that we have to walk them through this process, which takes a lot of our phone time, and then this in turn takes a lot of man-hours. So we are asking for the 25, and this last sentence, I don't like the way I put it after I read it, but the $25, I'm asking for $25, and then on top of that, another five for mailing. And so it'd be a total of actually $30. But after reading this, I'm okay with going to a $20 fee with a $5 mailing and handling fee. So it'd just be a flat $25 fee.
Commissioner Abner.
I'm going to leave it on to the Treasurer's Office, and Chris and I talked about it. One of the things I told her before coming forward with her memo or her ask was that she put in there how many that she's doing every year, put some data in there to what we're doing. And I guess I was quite surprised of how many car titles we do every day. And so we did talk about the fee, the $25, and that we could revisit this maybe in six months to eight months, again, with more data to say, how much money is actually Minnehaha County putting out of our pockets to pay for the time of her staff and to pay for the mailing? And so I encourage the $24, $25 at this point, and then we could revisit if it, it really is costing us more money than we should put those costs out there. But I think we needed to have the data to support it.
Right. And certified mail and your FedEx and your UPS, we're getting at least 500. And that was for the month, just for the month of January, that was 500 titles that came in to do. That's not including our YBA, which is your best address and Dakota Post. And I think we average, I'm thinking like 15 of those a week, so.
Okay, okay.
And just a transaction alone can take 20, 30 minutes or longer, just with the fact that we are on the phone. And the gal that sits right outside my window or my office, she's on the phone nonstop trying to collect information from these people. And it's multiple times. It's not just, I need this, I need this. You know, then they'll call back, and it's like, now, what did you say I needed? And so we try to direct them to the website, and they want to talk to somebody. So it is just a lot of man-hours, a lot of time.
So a mail-in title is a lot different than somebody walking up to the window and...
It just, yeah. Yeah, you got to make sure the paper, and when the paperwork's not there, that's when the problem begins. And nine times out of 10, it's not all there. So that's where the problem lies.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution to authors. All right, it's that $25.
Second, I'd like to make a comment.
Motion and a second. Olivia, questions on the motion or anything? Do you have it? Okay, Commissioner?
I just, you know, in this case, we're making the cost causer pay the cost. I mean, people that have everything sent in correctly, they're not the problem. It's the people that we have to continually work with over time. And the people that cause us to spend more should pay more.
Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Iberger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
You bet, Chris. Good job.
Thanks.
All right. Consider a resolution of sale pertaining to the auction held February 8th, 2021 of the Minnehaw County surplus real property slash gravel pit and authorize allocation of the proceeds of the sale to a designated fund. Craig, are you with us?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, as you were aware of from previous updates, the county auctioned off the gravel pit that was not being utilized by the county. And that auction was conducted by Weeman Auction. We had five different bidders who were participating. Generally, the market for gravel pit would be centered around contractors in the area. So, local contractors were all contacted, rather, and we did have a significant amount of bidding and interest in the property. The highest and final bid for the property was $2,025,000. And so that is how the auction ended. The title work is being processed by First Dakota Title. The buyer provided the 10% non-refundable down payment for the auction already. As South Dakota codified law outlines, even though the commission had already declared the property surplus and selected the auction as the method for sale, this resolution of sale is before you for approval. Again, as part of a codified law, that sale does need to be approved. This is really a win, not only for the county, but also for the private sector. The county is able to get property back on the tax rolls that was otherwise not being utilized by the county. And then also with all of the different building projects and growth that we heard during the Forward Sioux Falls presentation that the area is experiencing, there is a critical need for additional aggregate and gravel. So, that was certainly borne out by the bidding that took place at the auction, and so are very happy to provide that. And I think there are a lot of parties within the county, in addition to the auction house, that can be thanked. And in particular, I'd like to thank the sheriff for working with us to make sure that the neighboring law enforcement shooting range can continue in operation unfettered by the sale of this gravel pit property. And certainly, we look forward to continuing to move forward with the closing on the gravel pit sale. We'll have more certainty in the next few weeks about a specific closing date. As a friendly reminder, the terms of the sale agreement that was drafted by the state's attorney and signed by the buyer indicate that the closing will take place no later than April 9th. I'd be happy to answer any other questions about the auction or process if it would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Questions for Craig? Bless you.
Just a comment. I just want to thank Craig. I know he put in a lot of hours in getting this auction ready to go, and it was a clear win for the county, for the taxpayers of the county. And I know that there were, it was quite the bidding war that ended up, so there is a dramatic need for this out there, and those that didn't get it, I think, were a little sad. So, thank you.
All righty.
Thank you.
Do we need to note where the funds are to go?
I think that's the thought. Let me say one other thing, which is, thank you to the auctioneer who did this for a flat fee of $3,000 as opposed to a percentage of 25% or something.
That would have been a heck of a percentage. Commissioner?
I would suggest the general fund, but I'm open to anyone else's suggestions.
Is it general or building fund that we wanted? I think we wanted this to go to the building.
I think the general fund. No, building fund? Okay. I would make a motion to approve and put it in the building fund.
All righty, we have a motion.
I would just like that confirmed, I guess, on where the money came from when it was first purchased. It seems to me that we're making an assumption that it came from the general fund, and I've had some input that thought it came from the building fund, so I think we need to have that verified.
That is where I just put it, but did you want to not, do we not want to designate it today then?
I'm not totally comfortable in doing it unless we can transfer it at some later point if we find out that there's a difference.
If I could comment, I did ask Kim Adamson in the auditor's office if the money can be transferred from the general to the building fund. It is not restricted money as it would be if it was a tax, a building fund assessment. So, we can, if we decide we don't want it in the building fund, there is no rule or nothing statutorily that says we can't move it over if we
Perfect.
need to. So, we have a motion.
Yep, then I'm comfortable with that.
I'll make a second.
Okay, we have a second, so. Carol, comment?
Commission office, Carol Mueller, commission office. Craig and I actually had talked briefly about this a while back, and the only thing we know about the payment is that it's listed for a dollar on the deed when the transfer, when it was moved into the county's name.
We can move a dollar around?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Faris?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Carol, when was that transferred originally, do you know?
I don't know.
It had to be a while ago.
Long time.
40s, okay. All right. Authorized chair to sign an agreement with JLG Architects for design services on the Minnehaw County admin and extension buildings. Craig, you still there?
Yes, good morning. Craig Dewey, commission office again. As you know, there are different building projects that are going on at the county. And so, one of the projects that is happening is the remodel of the extension building as well as the administration building. Due to space constraints, the administration building, as it's currently configured, is bursting at the seams with different employees. And so, in an effort to better organize departments so that we can better utilize space and allow for some form of growth moving forward for county staff, it was undertaken to engage in the design process for architectural services for the admin and extension building. And after a competitive proposal process, different architecture firms submitted proposals, and they were reviewed. JLG Architects has been selected as the architect for this project. This is a professional service, so under codified law, the county did not have to conduct a proposal process at all, but felt that it would definitely bring the best value for the county and for taxpayers as well. And so, our owner's rep, Tegra, was responsible for negotiating the details of the contract. We received input from our outside legal counsel, who is familiar with construction manager at-risk contracts, which is a component of this project, which will allow the county to better control the costs and plan this project moving forward. And so, the negotiated fee for services from JLG is 6.5% of the building cost. And along with the architecture contract, which the AIA documents, as you know, are quite lengthy for different projects. We also have a letter in writing from our outside legal counsel indicating that he views the contract as ready for signature. Again, Tegra also views this as ready for signature and has been an advocate for the county as far as conducting those negotiations. And so, we're very excited to be able to move forward with this planning process and would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Craig. Questions for Craig? Comments?
And make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Craig. We will now move on to our legislative update. Somebody asked me today, how long is the legislature in session? Do you know, Carol?
Thirty-seven days.
Okay, we're 21 of 37, okay.
I'm glad I put that in the memo so I could answer that for you real quickly. As of, last week, they'd completed 21 of their 37 days. And I just have three bills that I'm going to provide, very high-level coverage for you to do. The first one is Senate Bill 181. That's been a bill that all of you are aware of, have been very interested in, have been working on it for a variety of years. The Veteran Cemetery that has been built on the northeast part of Sioux Falls, which is actually in Minnehaw County, is on a township gravel road. And it's been a while since I've driven by there, but it's beautiful what they're doing out there. And we recognize that that road needs to be taken care of. This road, this particular bill would appropriate money that the state would pay for the road. So, and not in the bill, but it would probably come onto the highway, the county highway system at that particular time. But it's the funding that we're really looking for. The other one that I just want to mention is Senate Bill 142. If you could scroll down a little bit, honey. Now that I'm closer, I can actually read the screen just a little bit. 142, that's a bill that Pennington County has been spearheading, and it clarifies right now, state law right now says that commission meetings shall be held in the courthouse or the place where the court usually meets. And there's, I believe, 11 places, 11 counties, who have facilities like we do or an administrative building. And it's basically a cleanup bill, but it's one that I appreciate Pennington County tracking down. And the other one I just want to mention is Senate Bill 152. As, that one is what authorized counties to issue off-sale liquor licenses. And it's just gone through committee, it hasn't gone anywhere else yet at this particular point, so. And I believe next week is crossover day. I'm going to look at Eric, does that sound about right? Next week's crossover day, so you'll see a lot of action this weekend, next week for bills that are out there. There were several bills related to public meetings that were introduced, and none of them are alive at this particular point. But they talked about requirements for public meetings, notices, and materials. And one was talking about live-streamed public meetings. And one was about a website for posting of notices for information. And another one was that you needed to, if you're doing a meeting completely by Zoom, that you would not have to have a physical location for the public to come. So, lots of good discussion, and to be honest about it, I think in one way or the other, most of those conversations we've been having internally here as to how we follow the state law and best practices and what's best for all of us and our constituents.
Thank you, Carol. Questions, comments? All righty. Move on to new business. Any new business?
Liaison report?
Did I miss liaison reports? Let's go to liaison reports. Commissioner Hiberger?
I have several. I will try to be really brief. Talked to the human services yesterday. The Spanish version of the financial needs application is now online. They have to print it or, and fill it out, and either bring it in or mail it back in. You can't fill it out online, but that is now available. I mentioned that a few weeks ago. Detox was moved out of the Public Safety Building a while ago and moved into Carroll Institute because of our difference in time between when the link was going to be open and when we needed people to be out of the Public Safety Building. And that has been going very well, and they've had really good response from people that have gone through the program at Carroll Institute. It's given a time also for them to work out any bugs in the system. One of the concerns early on was that, since it was not locked like the Public Safety Building, that we may lose quite a few people. We've actually only had two people walk away, one of which returned on their own, and the other one made different arrangements. We found that, or human services has said it's really empowered people to take control of their own selves and realize they need to work on their problems of addiction. So that has actually been a really good way to transition into the, from Carroll Institute onto the link. And then the last one I wanted to talk to, I did have, it worked great, the sheriff talking today about our competency restoration, because part of my liaison report was going to just be comment on the report that I had Carol put in our news, our weekly email a couple of weeks ago about improving criminal justice response to people in mental illness. UJS puts out an annual report, and that report just came out. I would encourage you to look at the UJS's website if you missed it on Carol's email. I'm just going to highlight a couple of quick topics. One, the sheriff did a great job of talking about one of the topics that we have worked on. We've also expanded the, a number of people that can perform those competency restorations. There's also been a fund set up through the South Dakota Soci, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners that reimburses counties for their part in the competency restorations. That fund has, we struggled a little bit with it. The money is there, the counties aren't always applying for those, and sometimes the paperwork's not correct, so it continues to be an issue we need to work at. Minnehaw County has done a good job of applying for those funds. We have seen a decrease in the amount we're bringing back each year. But Melinda and I did talk about it again today, and we will continue to try to work with our judges and our public defenders and state attorneys to make sure we're following the correct rules so we can get reimbursed through the county from the state fund. Oh, now, another one I wanted to touch on just quickly was that there has been statewide mental health training for a lot of stakeholders that touch people through the criminal justice system with mental illnesses. Law enforcement, jail correction officers, the state prisons, the public defenders, the state's attorney's office, judges, the court services office, public advocates office. So that was like a really fast synopsis of what's in the report. It's a quick read, it's done very well. The one you got might not have all of, a couple of updates, found a few spelling errors and a few little details, small details that needed to be corrected. But online would be the updated version, so, thank you.
All righty, thank you. Other liaison?
Just two quick reports. Commissioner Karski and I participated in a Zoom call on, I would say, close to the final bid specifications and documents for the Highway Department replacement facility. And then the second one is, and we've all been told this by Carol, that I think the public needs to be aware of the fact that the Fair Board did receive two grants and the, I'd say, the existence of establishing some revenue sources that were lost during the pandemic, which will help support ag-related issues for the Fair Board.
All righty, moving on to new business. Any new business? Commissioner Bender, did you have any old business?
I think it's Olivia's birthday. I wanted to wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Olivia.
We'll do you a favor and we won't sing, at least I won't, so. Happy birthday to you, so.
We can just all be, you should feel good that we're all older than you, I'm sure, so.
Mr. Chairman, there's just no camera focused on her at this time.
It's okay, if she doesn't want to turn any redder than she is, so.
I would also say that in reviewing the minutes from last week, I commented on five different things under business, and she put it into like five lines, very succinctly, very professionally, very comprehensively. Thank you.
Unlike yourself. I'm sorry, Commissioner, that wasn't nice.
Give you a little bit of what I've got in me.
Okay. New business, old business done. We need a motion to recess.